I get tired now. Sometimes I put readers on.
Good morning. I call to order the regular meeting of June the 4th, 2025. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Helton. Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Chairman Eversol.
Here.
Invocation and pledge to be conducted by Commissioner Baker this morning, so all please rise.
Thank you. It's so good to be here today and to see all of you. Today we have the invocation from Pat Brannum with the Bahai Faith of Metro.
This is a prayer for aid and assistance. My God, my adored one, my king, my desire, what tongue can voice my thanks to thee? I was heedless, thou didst awaken me. I turned back from thee, thou didst graciously aid me to turn towards thee. I was as one dead, thou didst quicken me with the water of life. I was withered, thou didst revive me with the heavenly stream of thine utterance, which has flowed forth from the pen of the all merciful. O divine providence, all existence is begotten by thy bounty. Deprive it not of the waters of thy generosity. Neither do thou withhold it from the ocean of thy mercy. I beseech thee to aid and assist me at all times and under all conditions, and seek from the heaven of thy grace, thine ancient favor, thou art in truth, the lord of bounty, the sovereign of the kingdom of eternity. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever. Thank you, Commissioner Baker. I am showing no presentations today. We'll go to minutes. Minutes needed to be entered and recorded for the agenda session on May the 14th, 2025, and the regular meeting on May the 14th, 2025. I'll be with the commission. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes. Reports, we'll have two reports enter into the record, Madam Clerk.
Will do.
We'll move into resolutions. We'll begin with Resolution 625-1. Some clerks will read the caption.
Resolution 625-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions and the bonds and owes of notaries previously elected.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing for comment. Roll call.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Helton. Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith. Chairman Eversol.
625-1 passes. 625-2 was pulled from the agenda. We'll move into finance, 625-3.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Madam Clerk, let's start with 625-3, please.
Resolution 625-3, a resolution authorizing the Hamilton County Juvenile Court to accept a grant from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health to establish a safe baby court pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 37-1-901, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. See no lights for comment, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck. Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes. 625-3 passes.
Madam Clerk, 625-4, please.
Resolution 625-4, a resolution accepting the proposal from Video Ray LLC for the purchase of a submersible remote operated vehicle amounting to $250,831.66 for the sheriff's office and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. May I ask the sheriff a question?
Sure, please.
My question, Chair, are there any other municipalities that have this type of vehicle?
Not a municipality. There's a volunteer organization that has a similar device that was bought off the internet. I have a very in-depth comparison if you'd like to hear that. I can go over if you've got the time.
I do have the time, but I trust, I trust you. I second that motion, Chair.
Third and second.
That's good.
Third.
It's good enough.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck. Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Helton. Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Good to see you here this morning.
Madam Clerk, 625-5, please.
Resolution 625-5, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to increase the design contract with Tinker Mott LLC to include reimbursable expenses for design of the new forensic center for an amount not to exceed $22,500.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck. Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes. 625-5 passes. That completes finance. We'll move into building and economics. Mr. Helton. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, could you read 625-6?
Resolution 625-6, a resolution to authorize the Hamilton County Board of Education to utilize a construction manager at risk procurement process and contract for the construction of the new North River Elementary School project.
If you approve. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited about this. I look forward to this working well. And but what I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, maybe it's of Todd Lehman, but can we be updated on how this process is working so we can probably utilize it again in the future?
Yes, Commissioner. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This project, as it seems to continue to evolve, it appears that, you know, it may affect various school populations differently than what was originally intended. I know that there's some schools in the Hickson area that are experiencing some substantial growth and crowding issues. And I would just like to ask to have an update about that. I know that there's been some talk about rezoning, and I don't anticipate anybody to have an answer today. But I guess what it comes down to is there have been conversations that suggest that possibly the closing of the Rivermont School will not happen as a result of growing student body populations in schools in the Hickson area. So I just, I want to update because, you know, we have neglected to address their multipurpose room that we tried to build two, three years ago. And if this is going to be the case, I would like to bring that conversation back up at some point in the very near future. So I just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Sharp, would you like me to reach out to the school system and see if they could come in and do an update?
I don't think it would be a bad thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take care of it. Commissioner Highlander.
I was going to offer to do the same thing that Commissioner Helton just did. So that's obviously, and Commissioner Sharp, I commend him for trying to take care of his district, look for the best needs of his children. But as we all know, the redistricting is based, is prioritized by the school board and not us. But thank you, and thank you for looking after your children, Commissioner Sharp. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's probably a great idea to get an update. There may be some different information floating around. Last I heard about that as well, Commissioner, I reached out to the school board chairman, Joe Smith, and he told me there were no conversations about keeping that school open. So I think it'd be a good idea to make sure we are all on the same page. So thank you for bringing that up, sir.
It is all the lights. So with no more, no more lights, Commissioner Helton, no more lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck. Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yeah.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes. 625-6 passes. Okay. That completes the agenda. With that, we'll move into announcements. So Commissioner Shipley.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be holding a planned Hamilton meeting Monday night. It's coming Monday in Cell Creek for the Bakewell Cell Creek area. I fortunate in this matter to have low density up there because there is no sewer. Of course, we know what decentralized system can do, it can explode. I've done a little since I've seen the article every day. I've done a little work with my schools, and it kind of goes back to Commissioner Sharp talking about the overpopulated schools. Right now in my district, I have one school with good capacity, that's so day. The rest of my schools are, they're getting to the limit. Next week, we're going to enter this planned Hamilton process. We've got to be very careful or we're going to be not just building schools, but buying portables to put kids in. And I know everybody said we're going to have all the growth we can, but how do we ever catch up with our school? We're behind the eight ball day. The more and more we stress schools, the deeper we get. And we don't have the, the money to overcome. So I hope when we start this planned Hamilton next week and we go discussing it, that we all look at it in a manner to keep growth going. But at the same time, enough infrastructure to keep our schools in a decent working manner. And I think that's where, to me, that's more important than the road or anything around it. And not overload new schools where we go back to portables all over Hamilton County. The next item, I want to wish my wife 70th happy birthday. Right is her birthday, and she got good news and yesterday. So it's a big birthday for her.
Happy birthday to Ms. Dee Dee. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, Commissioner Shipley, happy to hear you got some good news. We, that's wonderful. Yeah, I've got, I've got another meeting actually in between our agenda and final meeting on the, on, on the RPA plan on the 17th at 6 o'clock. So we've probably had eight meetings in two and a half years and can never have enough. You know, it's kind of interesting. One of the things that came up that we'd never discussed before are the number of coal mine shafts that are on Signal Mountain, which is interesting because, I mean, it's not part of the plan, and I know Dan's out there and we talked about it, which was interesting because when, when we moved here in 92, it was probably 95. My, two of my little, my kids were little. They were out walking in the backyard. There's a guy that has 20 acres behind us, and he came out yelling, hey, you know, watch out for the coal mine shafts. So that's something we're going to take, take into consideration also that we haven't even remotely looked at before. So I look forward to that meeting, and it's a gentleman, a constituent, who has a deep knowledge of water and sewer named Kurt Wells that I'm working with. And so anyway, we'll see how that meeting goes, and, you know, it might be the last. We might have some more, you know. So it's been a process. I thank Dan for his patience. And I think the last time we talked, as long as we get it done this year, that'd be good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, please pass along my happy birthday to Ms. Dee Dee as well. I'm glad to hear she got good news. Continued prayers for her, sir. Other thing, I just want to show appreciation and say thanks to Mr. Kirk for his continued involvement in our community. Today, he's invited a recent graduate from Hickson High School down here to attend this meeting. And he's always making sure that we have opportunities for our youth to be engaged around the community and in our civic process. So thank you, sir, for your continued engagement and welcome for being down here today. Thank you for coming. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Beck.
No announcements.
Mr. Sharp.
No announcements.
Commissioner Helton. I just want to welcome my friend Jerry Peterson to the Hamilton County Commission Room. Good to see you, friend. Mr. Chauncey. Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome two of our school board members here, Mr. Slater and my representative, Mr. Keane. Appreciate your involvement and paying attention to what's going on here. Also, I'd like to say that Ms. Dee Dee's good reports and answered a lot of prayers. We need to keep them up though. Don't let up. Need to keep them up. We're real thankful for that. Also, I want to commend Commissioner Shipley for looking at the costs of growth. And it's not just maintenance of temporary areas. It's also the infrastructure that goes well beyond the maintenance costs of coming in. So we need to be, we, growth is good, but it needs to be responsible growth. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy birthday to Ms. Dee Dee, and it is good news. We're still praying for her, and we will continue praying for her. That's wonderful news. And since we're all welcoming our constituents, I'd like to welcome my constituents, Hugh Morrow's back there in the background whispering. How are you, sir? But that's all. Thank you.
Attorney Taylor. Mayor.
A few announcements. One, you all know tomorrow at 9:30 down at the riverfront, governor's in town. State legislative delegation is going to be there to make an announcement about the state's investment in the riverfront. An exciting day for our community. Equally exciting for the other near opposite corner of the county, delayed by rain a few weeks ago. We're cutting a ribbon, I believe, up in Commissioner Highlander's district at the Birchwood Community Center where the, this commission many months ago funded a playground that really kind of shocked the Birchwood community that we followed through on a big investment up there. They had grown to believe that that would never happen. And there wasn't, believe it or not, there wasn't a public playground in that community. And so that's an exciting development, and Matt Foles and his team have done a great job taking care of that facility. And then just lastly on this, the rumor that was mentioned about the school that's in the design phase in Hickson, that, that's just a rumor. You know, anytime you get a question like that, rather than the rumor being made public, there's no truth to that. I had never heard that before. I confirmed while we were sitting there that there's no truth to that. So the plans in terms of Rivermont closing and going into a brand new school are just as they have been.
Commissioner Highlander.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for reminding, what I should have reminded about the Birchwood Community Center. And mayor, that is at 11:30, am I correct? 11:30 Saturday.
I'm being told by Haley that we moved it up to 11.
Up to 11.
Probably going to be dodging some rain.
Okay, okay. 11 o'clock.
Yeah, we'll all gather there in the lunch hour.
Thank you.
You bringing lunch?
11 rather than 11:30 Saturday. Thank you. I told people 11:30. Thank you very much.
Okay, good information. From the, from the chair, a couple of things. Number one, want to congratulate Highway 58 Fire Department. This month is 50 years in existence. And so it's, it's amazing that group of individuals, and it's not just Highway 58. I see TRICOM chief here, Chief Fitz, you and your team. What our volunteer firefighters do is, to me, is remarkable. Takes a special person, number one. Not everybody wants to be a firefighter, period, but to be a volunteer firefighter. And it's, to me, is a remarkable individual that I know that the county cherishes, and I know mayor, you and your team cherish as well. So that's, they're, they're a remarkable team. Want to remind everybody two things. Number one is the budget hearings for the general government will be after this meeting. Kind of give you a little background on the budget hearings. Whole goal of the budget hearings is to help us work together to find answers on some of our, solving some of our service issues that we may have, or service gains that we want to continue to get. So I know Lee, I sent you some questions last Friday, and I know some other commissioners did too. So, so this is not about a gotcha. And I sent the school, Mary Ellen, and I sent Dr. Robertson a list of questions last Friday as well because it's not about a gotcha. It's about how do we work together to achieve a common goal. One, one thing I'll think about, you know, this, this is something that kind of resonates with me is if you think about your younger childhood days, you can always remember a teacher. And I can remember a third grade teacher, Ms. Reynolds, that probably put a more impression on my life than, than anybody at that timeframe. And I think it's important that as we look at these budgets, how do we look at dollars? And how do we continue to focus where it really, the rubber meets the road? Because in the third grade, I couldn't have cared less who my commissioner was. I couldn't have really cared less on who my mayor was. I couldn't really care less on who my superintendent was. Those things as a third grader, you don't really impress you. But that teacher that's in the room with you, that's where the rubber meets the road. And I think as, as we've said during this whole budget process, or as I've said during this whole budget process, that's where the rubber meets the road, and that's where we've got to make sure that as we're looking at these dollars that we're doing, really focusing. And I know, see the, the two school board members, thank you both for being here. Appreciate your service and what you do, and you guys did a tremendous job on balancing a tough budget, just like the county's done a tough job on balancing the budget. But you know what? There's nothing wrong with taking partnership and saying, hey, let's look at this together and see if we can't do things, look at things to a different lens. Sometimes if we don't do things from a different lens, then we only get what we see. And sometimes getting a different lens, we see things that maybe two people sees. And I know, I'll be the first one to tell you that there's, I've been shown more throughout my career and educated on things, how I can be better, what I can look at differently than, than what I have put out there. So, so I would just challenge that. That's our whole goal in this, this process. So appreciate you two gentlemen for being here and look forward to next week. But I also look forward to today. With that, with that being said, we'll move to the public portion. So if there's anybody from the general public has anything they want to discuss, anything other than zoning, you have three minutes. So anybody come forward? I see nobody coming forward. So with that, all right, okay. Public, public discussion. This is, this is the only public meeting as far as.
We're going to have a, we're going to have a budget meeting after this meeting. This is the regular commission meeting.
Okay, so I can wait for this?
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Smith will be running that as the finance chair.
Do you mind, sir? We do not do public comment during the committee meetings. Those are for us to be educated on questions. So I would advise you, if you would, if you would like to even comment on the budget, please do so right now. You've got three minutes at this time.
My name is Gerald A. Peterson. I live at 1019 Central Drive in Hickson, Tennessee. And there's some things I like to see the county government do on what they're doing. I like what President Trump is trying to do when reducing the size of government. I would like the commissioners or the county to try to do that too. And I like to have you eliminate nonprofits. For what I see, how they work is they hire their friends and relatives, and those people get rich. And I believe if the service is so valuable to the people, a business should be created, and they could offer that service and charge those people for the services instead of having a taxpayer like me pay for it. I also believe you should have term limits for all the commissioners. It shouldn't be a lifetime job. Well, I think I understand is you could have somebody on the board for the, I call it the dog pound. And I like to eliminate how they're, they're operated because, you know, I agree to put down an animal that's not wanted anymore, but I shouldn't have to pay to keep him alive forever. There was a, an article a number of months ago where I believe was a pit bull was in the, in the pound for 1,445 days. And again, nobody wanted that animal. So why, why were we paying to keep it alive that long? And my understanding, a couple that did finally did adopt it is they've been longtime volunteers and that at the dog pound, and they adopted it. And I don't understand that because then the dog pound had to retrain the dog so it'd be able to live with a family. And I believe that's just wasteful spending.
Sir?
Glenda Papu, I live in Birchwood. And I just want to thank you all for the process that you're going through as far as reviewing all of the budgets because we, the people, we put you in these seats to represent us, and those are our tax dollars. And I just want to encourage you not to be afraid to ask the hard questions as you go through this process. I haven't been involved in all of this for many, many years. Started being involved in this when my eyes were open to a lot of the things that were going on, not just in Hamilton County, Chattanooga, but across the United States. And so we, the people, are more diligent with our dollars now. And we, I just, I just think it's very, very important. Just think about this. You have a son that comes to you and say, Dad, I need $500. You're not just going to dole out $500. You're going to ask him what it's for, and you're going to want accountability for that. And so that's kind of where we, the people, stand. We want accountability for our tax dollars, and I thank you for what you're going to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. No other business will be in recess until June 11th at 9:30 a.m.